So, why don't we all stand and please give the pledge to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome everyone to the October 11th, 2011 School Committee Meeting. Today is a work session, so that means that at any time before we take a vote, people may come up to the mic and say something if they wish. So I would say if you have something, please just come on up to the mic and wait there and I'll soon recognize it. You don't have to wait until I pause and ask people to come forward because I don't always remember to say that. All right, let me roll call, please. Linda Alvinzato. Elboy Benson.
Here.
Larry Sarisi. William Mudge.
Here.
Kimberly Page.
Here.
Joe Thompson.
Here.
Richard Welch.
Here.
Julia Held.
Here.
Student representative. Thank you. Let me, could you go over the calendars, please? Tomorrow, October 17th, we have a joint meeting with the Town Council, 6:00 PM, Beachwood Senior Center. October 17th also, there's a CILAC meeting, 7:00 PM, Central Administration Building. October 18th, Policy Subcommittee Meeting, 11:00 AM, Central Administration Building. October 25th, School Committee Business Meeting, 7:00 PM, North Kingstown High School Cafeteria. October 26th, Wellness Meeting, 3:30 PM, Davisville Middle School. November 8th, Professional Development Day, no school for students. November 11th, Veterans Day, schools and offices closed. Thank you. Thank you. All right, that brings us to a fun part of our meeting. We are doing recognitions of both our Teacher of the Year and our Educational Support Paraprofessional of the Year.
It is a pleasure this evening. We have just had, for those of you watching on television, we just had a reception tonight for our Educational Support Person of the Year and Teacher of the Year. But we wanted to do something, just briefly, for the television to make everyone in the community aware of these two fine professionals that we have in our district. And the first I'd like to have come on up here is Tina Billetto, our Educational Support Professional of the Year. Tina has been at Hamilton School and she was nominated for what she brings to that community and all the work that she does for our kids and for helping other professionals. And she's just an absolutely outstanding paraprofessional and we are absolutely delighted to have her in our district. And congratulations, Tina. So this award here will be going up in the central office area and we've already given Tina some other nice awards that she can take home with her. So thank you very much. And also this evening, we are celebrating Diane Hennault. If you could please come on up. And Diane is the Teacher of the Year. She is from Stony Lane Elementary where she teaches second grade. She does an absolutely fantastic job with her students, otherwise she wouldn't be in this position right now. But she also is the Science Coordinator for the elementary level. And tonight I'll be making a presentation about those scores and they're very good, as they have been for many years. And they're also exceptionally well at the middle level where those elementary students go to. So we're very happy about the accomplishments that Diane has brought to this community and we really appreciate having you, Diane, so congratulations. Thank you very much for coming tonight.
Yes, we next go to the Science Kneecap Presentation, so whenever. Why don't you go ahead and get started?
Okay. Well, good evening, everybody. I just wanted to take a few minutes to talk about our science presentations. I was talking about them earlier. And I have some really, really good news for you this year around science scores for the district. As you know, every April in May, is it April or May? Is it May? Okay. In May, our district takes the Kneecap Science Test. And it's been for some years now. And it's been probably one of the trickier tests for North Kingstown and for all the other schools in the state. And this year, we are very delighted because at the middle level, we have made some significant improvements, much more so than any other district in the state. So we're very proud of that and that's something that I'd like to highlight tonight. Before we do that, I just want to talk to you about the scores district-wide. And I'm going to apologize for the quality of the size of things here. On my screen, this looked a lot better. But what this basically says here is that currently at grade four, 62 percent of our kids are at proficiency. And that is roughly the same as where we have been in the last couple of years. And that puts us as ninth in the state in terms of our science achievement. That is, relatively speaking, a good score. We would like it to be higher. As you know, we have a GemsNet curriculum that is responsible for a lot of good things in our district, not to mention these scores. They're common lessons. They're all, the curriculum is pretty much given to us and the training, which is something that I wish we had for just about every curriculum in our district. And this past couple of years, we've started with something called "science notebooking", which is a way to incorporate a lot of writing into science. And we're seeing a lot of positive things around that. How do we plan to improve on our science scores? We're looking at practice sessions with kneecap-like questions, careful reading for our students, better alignment to the GSEs. A lot of this is about the alignment of what we do to that test. In some cases, we do absolutely fantastic science lessons, but sometimes those lessons don't necessarily occur on the kneecap test. That means the quality of our program is bad. It means the alignment is a problem. As you're going to see, that's an issue particularly at the high school, more than anywhere else. So we're always working at every level to keep that alignment up. We also supplement, not every area is covered by a kit, so in the cases where they're not, we try to do things where we find educational experiences that go beyond the GemsNet kits. And we have coordination by district personnel, coordinators, doing this work. And we're very happy with this. And I think you can see from the good results that we've had that things are going well in this regard. At the middle level, you can see that a couple of years ago, we were at 28 percent proficient. Last year, we jumped to 44 percent proficient. And this year, we jumped to 58 percent proficient. Those gains are the highest gains of any district in the state for those past two years. Of any district in the state, we have gained more. And currently, North Kingstown is the second highest district in the state in middle school science. So we're very pleased about that. And Davisville Middle School, in particular, is the second highest-scoring school in the state of Rhode Island at the middle level. So congratulations to them. And I'm going to ask Ruth Ann Logan and Lori Randall to come on up in a few minutes to talk about that. And not to steal their thunder, but maybe I can actually get to this once they come on up. But I'm going to let them talk about what is accounting for the good results and what they plan on doing to continue with the improvement. So I'm going to save that slide for later. At grade 11, we're having, we're frustrated. As you can see, we've been around 13th and then 12th and then 11th and now 15th in the state. And that's just uncommon for the high school. As you know, just a couple of weeks ago, I showed USAT scores that were third in the state. And AP scores, by the way, are unbelievable. I plan on making a presentation about that in a couple of weeks where our AP scores are, we have more kids participating by far than ever before and more kids are passing their AP exams. And so we're very delighted about that. And as you know, with kneecap math and kneecap English, those scores seem to be relatively much better than the science. For some reason, we're having a hard time grasping the alignment to the science test. And that's been a source of frustration for a couple of years now and we're doing things to address it. One of the biggest things that we're doing is we're starting to pilot a program where we start the ninth graders in physics. This year, we're using that curriculum and it is given to us by a group of teachers in New Jersey that we've been working with. And I'm going to talk a lot more about those details, but right now, suffice it to say that we have a few teachers trained. They're piloting it with our current 11th graders who are taking physics. And our plan is that all goes well, that as we move through the next few years, we would have ninth graders taking physics, then chemistry, then biology. This would be a much more ramped-up biology. And the goal that we're looking at is how many students are taking physics AP, which is a much more rigorous goal than the kneecap exam. But we feel that by doing this as well, that it's also going to help us with kneecap scores. So I'm not completely upset or anything about what we're producing in terms of scientific achievement at the high school, because there are a lot of indicators that suggest we're doing really well. But we need to do better on the kneecap. And we're definitely trying all kinds of different things. And this year, for instance, we're going to be doing a pre-test with all the juniors to make sure we understand their gaps. And all the teachers, no matter if they're teaching physics or chemistry, are going to be working with students and trying to make sure that they are well-prepared for the kneecap. But what I'd like to do right now is go back to the middle schools. And if I could have Principal Logan and Lori Randall, who is the Science Coordinator from Davisville Middle School, I think these are the two appropriate people to talk to you about what it is that is accounting for such good results at Davisville.
I don't really know if you need this, but, hi, everyone. Thank you for having us here. We are so thrilled to have an opportunity to celebrate good news. I asked Lori to join me because she is the one that is really in the trenches and can speak to some of the things that we've done. As the principal, I hope that I've provided some structures that allowed her to do this kind of work. Some of the things that I think were very significant were, the day that the test results were released, we received emails the very next morning from teachers all around the state of Rhode Island asking us, "What's the magic?" I thought that was quite funny because it wasn't magic, it was a lot of hard work. And I think there are several factors that contributed to our increase in scores, which was 22 percent in one year. So we increased from having 44 percent of our students proficient to 64 percent. We are the second highest out of 57 middle schools in the state. So we're really, really excited about that. I believe that the collaborating among the teachers in our school and with Wickford Middle School really helped. And that was an initiative that Dr. O'Jay and Dr. Thornton really worked hard at, having curriculum coordinators. And Lori has been able to really keep our teachers focused on the work. And I just couldn't do it all, so it was great having Lori be there. And she's the one who's knowledgeable about the science content. So providing opportunities, instead of your humdrum faculty meeting with housekeeping items, it was more like, "Science, teachers, go sit in a room and look at the curriculum and start aligning your instruction with what needs to be done." They pulled apart the kneecap, they did practice sessions, we did embedded professional development, they modeled lessons, and they actually left their classroom and went into a sixth-grade classroom to see what was going on. And the sixth-grade teachers went into an eighth-grade science class. And I think you can learn so much from getting out of your classroom and being with other colleagues, so that was a real plus. And there was a lot more writing in science. And I believe that if you take a look at the released items, they ask students to think critically and to write. So we did that in everyday instruction and lessons. And I could go on and on, but I think Lori can really speak to some of the instructional pieces. And I'm really proud of all the teachers. Thank you.
Hi. Can you hear me? Okay. As Ruth Ann said, that it's not really magic, because we don't have magic unless we have science. So there's a couple reasons why I think our scores went up. First and foremost, I think we have hard-working and dedicated teachers in the entire district. Specifically, I know I can speak to DMS, we make sure that our lessons are aligned to the GSEs, so that we make sure that we have a purpose for the lesson. The big concept is taught using a focus question. Writing in science has been a huge push last year, where we make sure students know how to respond to short answer and constructive responses, which increased our scores for the writing piece on the kneecap, for the science kneecap. Grade-level collaboration has been huge. Each grade meets together twice a week to discuss activities, the lessons, the writing, to look at student work, to see how we can improve it. The GemsNet kits provide hands-on active learning, which is huge. And many of the questions from the kneecap directly relate to the labs that we do in class. And then, good communication with GemsNet instructors. There's a lot of communication with the URI teachers and the facilitators. So I think those are like the huge pieces as to why our scores increased. Any questions?
Next year, you have what, 20 more for that?
That's the plan, to keep increasing.
I'm only kidding. Congratulations.
Thank you.
It's excellent. I know Dr. O'Jay and Dr. Thornton, in fact, a couple of years ago, were stressing that we had to look at what was being expected in the testing process, not to meet the test per se, but what the subject matter was so that we could be prepared for the test. And I think it's showing, so thank you. And all the teachers.
Thank you. I agree. We're not trying to teach to the test, but we want to make sure that our students can perform well.
Subject matter, right.
Do you all want questions right now? I know that, okay, go ahead, Joe.
Lori, I've been trying to beat the drum here for smart boards.
Yes.
And I haven't heard you say anything about that, so I'm hoping that you find that they're helpful and that we need more.
We do. Actually, I'm at a disadvantage because I don't have a smart board. So there are lessons that are online to show certain activities that I cannot do unless I sign in through the computer lab, and there's only one computer lab for the school. So right now, there's only two of six teachers have smart boards for science.
Thank you.
Mrs. Benson.
Congratulations. And I was very thrilled when I read your scores in the paper. And Dr. O'Jay reported to us. But I've been, it's been a push on writing and reading as related to science. And when you were explaining what you did in the class, I saw how that correlated with some of the latest research concerning science. So I think for many years, we've been falling down in science because we haven't known the vocabulary. And that's a very, very interesting part of it.
I agree. I feel as though the science kneecap doesn't just assess science, but it also assesses a student's ability to read, to do mathematical calculations, as well as to write. So in order to reach proficiency, you actually have to be proficient across the board in all areas, not just science.
You've done an excellent job.
We all have, yes. Thank you.
Mr. Welch.
Well, thank you very much for all your hard work. Surely is appreciated. Last year, with Wickford Middle winning, that was a wonderful thing for our community. This certainly is a wonderful thing for our community. I have a concern that some of the folks up at this table forget about what happens when we go to budget. Some people worked against this committee on what we asked for, for our budget last year. And unfortunately, teachers, staff, parents came to a meeting after the budget was certified and wanted to know why we were making cuts. But we're here for education. And sometimes it gets lost in the budget process. And when we talk about cutting things like internet or computer technology and things for science, we're hurting the students, not only for one year, we're hurting them for many years. And there are people at this table that ask for those cuts. And I'm here to say to you, you need to have the folks from your school and every other school and the parents send a message home. Next Monday night, we will be having a joint meeting with the Town Council. And it's imperative that you folks make your voices known to the Town Council. They control the budget. We have to make the cuts, okay? You've done a great job with what you've had to work with. We would all like every classroom to have a smart board. We can only do so much with what we have. And a great job with your resources. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, well, thank you very much. I appreciate it. I know firsthand that you all do a great job over there as well as at Wickford, so we really appreciate all that you've done with our students and very impressed and proud to be able to boast about these results. Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations. All right, that concludes our presentation. Thank you, everybody who has helped out. We now come to correspondence. Yes, Mrs. Alvinzato.
Yes, I received, as we all did, an email from Dr. Kenworthy. And I meant to reply to that, I just haven't had a chance this week. It's been a crazy week. And I wanted to thank him for that. I appreciated it. Appreciated the professional and respectful way in which he communicated his ideas and taking the opportunity to tell us how he felt about the value of the Jamestown students to our larger high school community. And I totally agree, I concur with his point of view and his perspective, and I just wanted to thank him for that.
Mr. Welch.
I as well received that. And thank you, Tom. I appreciate it. For those of you who didn't see the patch today, there was a nice little article about the situation with the Jamestown tuition. And what I would say is that the majority feels as though the contract that's in force is the contract that we need to have with Jamestown. They bring a lot to this school, to the high school, and we appreciate the fact that they're here. And that's why the majority voted to support that contract. And appreciate what you had to say, Dr. Kenworthy. Thank you.
All right. I received some pieces of correspondence from Marissa Eisner over at DMS. The new students who won the Best You Can Be raffle were, for the last two weeks, it was Allison O'Connor, Ian Wiley, Samantha Tarbox, James Downey, Matthew Bolter, and Cyrus Maldonado. These students have won gift cards from Great Harvest Bread, Kohl's, Showcase Cinema, and Subway's. And also, a staff member who won it was Debbie Cathers, so congratulations to them. I also received correspondence from Dr. Kenworthy that this Friday, our football team is playing over East Greenwich, and both teams will be taking part in the Go Pink campaign to support breast cancer awareness. Wes Welker autographed the football that will be auctioned off at the game to raise money for the cause. So if you attend the football game, thanks.
I guess you were supposed to wear pink.
Uh-oh. The last piece of correspondence I received was from Louise Denette at Susan M. Hensler Quoneset. And she said, "Two students in Mrs. Wilson's second grade, Connor and Cole Henkin, have been volunteering their time at a local community vet to help collect acorns and chestnuts for a group of animals who were displaced from their homes due to trees damaged by Hurricane Irene. Connor presented a collection of artifacts to the class and asked them to help. And currently, Mrs. Wilson's second graders have collected food to help these local wild Mr. Thompson.
In your packet on page 12, there's a correspondence from Healthy Places by Design. And I just would point out, there are several dates on here, but one of the dates that's coming up immediately is actually tomorrow night. At Davisville Elementary School, at 6:00 PM, the group is going to be talking about planning and designing mixed-use centers. And since we're in the process of wondering what's going to come about in Davisville Elementary School, it would be appropriate at the time. Also, I wanted to refer back to something we had been talking about, the kneecap scores. And I understand that there's an extra motivation that's being supplied at the high school from Dr. Kenworthy, having to do with a sartorial display. So I just would bring that out and say, "Congratulations, Dr. Kenworthy. I think it's good that you're motivating your students towards higher kneecap scores."
All right, there is another correspondence. We move on to citizens' comments. Do you have anybody who has signed up? All right. No one has signed up, but like I said, this is a work session, so before we come to vote on anything, if anyone would like to say anything, please just come up to the mic and you may speak at that time. So we now move on to superintendent's report. And I know that he was handing out a paper that was being passed down, so hopefully that's gotten to everyone. Dr. O'Jay.
Seems I'm getting a lot of presentation time in tonight. This has been a topic that I know that we have talked about on many occasions. And I don't mean to have an extended discussion about this tonight, although I'm perfectly willing to hear comments and take questions if you should have them. But a few weeks ago, you authorized me to talk with and to look into the idea of including in the Jamestown tuition one item in which I would use the upcoming pension issue and highlight that and have the pension portion of the Jamestown tuition be based on FY13 in lieu of the upcoming pension crisis that we all see coming our way. After looking into that and having discussions with representatives from Jamestown, I have decided that I do not recommend that we go down that road. And I want to talk a little bit about why that is the case, how I see the tuition being situated, and what I would recommend, or in this case, not recommend, as we move forward. For the FY13 pension, I don't recommend that we do any changes based on adding to the FY13 pension, largely because the pension payment is already part of the formula. And I've given you some paperwork where you can see that. Obviously, and this is a topic that you have all gone down many times before, this formula is based on real numbers and not projected numbers. So for FY13, those real numbers would be FY11 numbers. Now, in this particular case, that's going to be a different number than it would be for 13, because 13 is a year where we get hit especially hard. And sometimes that's going to happen. In some cases, if the economy goes the other way, it could turn out differently. But in this case, it's tough. That doesn't mean that we're not going to see that money. We will see that money as long as the contract with Jamestown stays put and this great relationship continues. So with that in mind, I don't recommend any change. But I'm also thinking in terms of the fact that the pension is already included. So for next year's payment, we'd be looking at an FY11 pension payment that we would have to somehow now take out of the formula because we're moving that one item to FY13. To complicate matters even more, that number would then be a projection. So it would be subject to change on many occasions. It would not be a real number. And that's largely the reason why we go with a number that's two years old, because that's the first point we the first point where we can absolutely with surety know exactly what the number is and make the process simple. So also, in looking into this, if there's an absolute doomsday scenario, the pension portion of this tuition payment could be as large as eighty, roughly $88,000. But that's discounting what they currently pay for the pension. You see what I mean? If there is some relief that comes from the legislature, that number could be as low as $20-something thousand. Again, discounting the present version of the pension. So I couldn't even tell you exactly what it is. What I can tell you is that it's not worth opening the whole thing up in order to find that number. And I know some of you may disagree with me about that point, but I'm just trying to fill you in on how I feel you should proceed. So I don't believe it's worth the confusion. I don't believe it's worth the possible distrust from both North Kingstown residents and Jamestown residents about, okay, we're opening this thing up. It's been years where both the North Kingstown committees and Jamestown committees have felt that this has been negotiated in good faith, and the number is based on real numbers about what North Kingstown pays to educate a high school student, and you have those figures in front of you. And so this has been done long before I've been here, and I think that it should be a process that we simply go through, you know, every year, just continue to keep this formula, because it is fair. What I'm showing you up here is the revenue that we currently would receive based on the numbers that we're dealing with right now. We have currently 195 regular education students and seven special education students. Those are special education students that are educated in the high school. They're not the kind of special education student that would be, say, an outplacement that would be very costly. Jamestown would take care of a student like that directly, not through North Kingstown. So overall, the revenue that we receive from Jamestown students all in is about $2,241,000. For expenditures, as you can see, we employ, and this may change from year to year, because obviously, we don't have like a separate wing where just Jamestown students reside. They mix into all of the classes that we currently have, and in some cases, we need to hire more teachers in order to accommodate 205 or 202 students that we are receiving. I've worked with the guidance office and the administration at the high school, and they inform me that in any given year, that could be roughly 10 to 15. So I've split it right down the middle, and let's call it 12.5. That's kind of a moving number, depending on what classes the kids actually take and how they necessarily fit into those classes. If that were 12.5 exactly, it would be $781,000 in cost to the district and related, you know, teacher pay and benefits. The cost of supplies, books, medical supplies, library, any additional IT, computers, that sort of thing, would probably come up to roughly $20,000 more. And as many of you have said, you know, the cost of papers and pencils, basically. So when that's all put together, that's about $800,000. Taking that away from the revenue that we receive, the financial benefit, after all is spent for having Jamestown in a building, is about $1.44 million. You all are very aware, Mr. Welch pointed out, that we're going to have a major budget crisis, and we're going to have a meeting next week to talk about some of the details on that. And I'm going to be in the situation where I'm going to talk to you and the town council about some of the things that we've become very much accustomed to in North Kingstown. It is a way of life for us, the school system, and how much it means to this community, and the programs and services that we've come to value in this community. And I'm going to have a very difficult time, as you all are, trying to figure out what we're going to need to cut to make budget next year. If we have to come up with another $1.4 million, we're in real trouble. Right now, we have maximum efficiency for North Kingstown High School. Could we fit some more kids? Probably, if we absolutely needed to. But this was made for roughly 1,600 students, and that's what we have. We have 200-plus students from a strong school system. If you look at Jamestown's elementary and middle school scores, they're very good scores. So, you know, those are students who are high-performing coming in. They don't need a lot of remedial services from North Kingstown High School. And what their presence does is it adds options. One of the nice things about big high schools, you know, sometimes people like small high schools, because they say the community may be a little tighter, and people know everyone a little bit more. One of the benefits of a big high school that we all love in this community is the many options kids have. We have more clubs. We have more teams. We have more music programs, strings. I mean, there's so much for our students that we, you know, my own kids take advantage of so much, and it's a wonderful thing. They get so involved. And we all know that kids that get involved in those extracurricular activities, that relates to better scores for them academically, and they become more well-rounded people. So what we have is a real gem in this community. We should be commended in this community for having an agreement with Jamestown where we can maximize the resources that we have at the high school. Every district in the state is currently looking for these kinds of arrangements so that they can make more out of their educational dollar. We already have it in a way that we largely control. We're not a regional school district like Charahoe, where every school committee of the three towns needs to confirm, imagine if we had to do what we do, and then Jamestown had to do it too and agree with us on everything. We don't necessarily have that. We have kind of a landlord and tenant relationship, and it works out fine for both communities. They like it. So I say, let's keep it, you know, and let's not quibble about, you know, relatively small money. I know Mr. Mudge, for instance, will talk to you a lot about bond, and, you know, and there's a lot of, a lot of people are very interested in, you know, the justice of things, and, you know, that we in North Kingstown pay for that bond, and therefore, the Jamestown residents should as well. I don't necessarily disagree with that, but I don't necessarily fully agree with it either. I feel that we have to continually acknowledge that we are a landlord and they're a tenant. And sometimes, almost all the time, when you have a tenant, they don't pay as much as the person who's paying that mortgage. And there are a lot of benefits to this high school that North Kingstown receives that Jamestown does not. We have it forever. As long as we keep it up, this is going to be a great benefit to our community. And just day-to-day kinds of operations, this is a building that isn't necessarily available to people in Jamestown the way it is for North Kingstown, obviously. So this is going to be a difference, one way or another, whether you call it bond or something else. So I'm encouraging you to just basically stay the course. We have a good arrangement with Jamestown. They're pleased with the arrangement. We're pleased with the arrangement. And as you can see, it's a huge benefit to this community. And I'd hate to be in a situation where we're insisting on a few more dollars, and we end up losing all of this goodwill and good revenue that comes to our district in trying to figure out a way to come up with another $1.4 million, while there's some other school committee and some other town council patting themselves on the back for making an arrangement where they just saved their taxpayers $1.4 million. So that's all I have to present tonight. I'm going to go sit back on the stage, and I'm sure there'll be comments and questions.
I have questions.
When Dr. O'Shea gets up here on stage, I'll let you ask your question, Mr. Mudge.
Questions? I totally just read what Dr. O'Shea comments, obviously. And I would like to point out that in fiscal year '03, Jamestown paid $9.6,000 a student to send their children to North Kingstown. $9.6,000 a student, '03. And that was according to the contract that was signed in 2000, I think 2000, and it went into effect, or 2001, it went into effect 2003. 2011, Jamestown paid $9,700. If I can read these numbers here. Check that. Is that nine point?
Yeah, 9,300.
Six hundred?
Three, 634.
Okay, nine six. So some, what, eight years later, Jamestown in 2011, for general education, paid $9.7,000 a student. $100 more. What's wrong with that number? I'm not saying what the number should be or shouldn't be at this time. All I'm saying is we need to go through a thorough process. Like Mr. Welch said indeed and wrote about some 10 years ago, that Jamestown should be paying their fair share of the bond. And Jamestown agreed to do that. Why did we take that away? Which has caused the town council now to go after Jamestown for what they calculated the Jamestown tuition rate should be increased by $262,000. Remember, this building was built, and it's in all the documentation, I can show it to anyone, was built to house 200 to 300 Jamestown students. Had Jamestown not agreed, or you blame a lot of politicians for failing, and I think Mr. Welch did, to get an agreement, this high school would have been downsized by a lot of magnitude of 20, not 20 percent, yeah, well, almost 15 percent. So the cost, and there was a handshake, as far as I'm concerned, with the officials way back when, that Jamestown, for perpetuity, we'd be paying their fair share. So in a...
Point of order, please.
Excuse me. I'm...
I think what we're asking for is, this is the superintendent's report, so we're asking what your question is, Mr. Mudge.
Yeah, well, I just want, I'm getting up to the question. So what I'm trying to do is determine why we feel that this is an equitable contract. In fact, we get $2,400 a year of state aid for every child that comes to North Kingstown, a resident child. $2,400. That's like $3.2 million in that neighborhood, as I recall. We don't get one nickel of state aid for the 200-plus students to go to North Kingstown High School from Jamestown. That's five, over $500,000. $500,000. Please, Mr. Welch, let me...
No, no, no. Put point of order.
You want to hear the facts.
It's not on the agenda for discussion tonight. If you want to put it on the agenda for discussion, get it on the agenda.
All right, all right.
You shut your mouth off, and a young lady was up here about past practices, didn't she?
All right, let's not, we're in a discussion. Mr. Mudge, do you have a question for the superintendent?
I am, I am continuing, okay? To want to get the information that we need to really evaluate this situation, because I would ask then, the Jamestown tuition rate that you have given us here for this year, I guess, is $10,100 a student. Is that for this fiscal year, 10, 11, or 12? I don't understand that. The handout.
Mr., Dr. O'Shea, answer, and then you can ask him more.
The tuition rate is for fiscal year 2012, and it's based on the costs of fiscal year 2010.
Right. Now, with respect to that also, Jamestown gets $800 a year from the state. So in fact, that rate then is $9,300 that they pay. While we share our state aid that we get for all the kids in North Kingstown with Jamestown, has that been factored into this equation? Have we looked at that?
Strictly deals with expenses.
No, no, no. What I'm saying is, is we can have expenses, but where do the revenues come from? For example, where...
The paperwork that I gave you, Bill, lists where the revenues come from.
It, I'm not sure I understand that. I just got it tonight, Doctor, so I'm going to, Doctor, you still have to look at it. But I can tell you something here, okay? If you look at where our budget money comes from, it's basically three sources or four sources. The general fund, federal funding, state funding, and local funding. And of course, we have the enterprise fund. What we do is we take, we take...
Do you have a question, Mr. Mudge?
Well, I'm trying to get some con of, I'm trying to understand is, what portion of this revenue is North Kingstown revenue and Jamestown revenue? For example?
All right, let's let that question be answered.
I'm sorry.
Did you repeat the question?
What portion of the Jamestown revenue, okay, expenditures, whatever the 10.1 represents, what is the derivative of that money? I mean, that rate is based on revenues. Now, the town in North Kingstown puts in $54 million into the school budget, approximately. The state puts in, in 2010, another 3.3 million, excuse me, the federal government did, and the state puts in 1.4 of special revenue, funding, on top of the other money.
To answer your question, it has nothing to do with these revenues. It's completely an expense-driven formula that has been approved by the school committee and subsequent school committees before that.
Well, don't you think we need to understand what the true economics of this arrangement is? Listen, I...
I haven't, I have not understood that previous school committees have not understood the economics of this. I'm understanding that they have gone into this with full knowledge and in good faith with Jamestown, so I'm not interested in changing that right now.
Well, I can tell you that if they may...
Do you have some other questions?
And that's what I already expressed, so that's how I feel.
If they erred, we need to get...
Okay, I'm going to take some other questions.
We need to get all the data on the table and make a good evaluation of this situation. By the way, the school committee in the past also, as Mr. Welch has insisted, okay, required that we have bond payments. This school committee decided, or some people, to quit the bond payments, not paying $262,000. Why did this school committee do that?
I'm going to go to other questions. Other school committee members have questions? Mrs. Alvin Zardo? I'm entering, I'll comment. I want to take questions first. Do I have other people who have questions? Mr. Thompson, did I see your hand up?
Well, it's a little statement that I want to make, so I'll wait.
All right. So we'll let every school committee make a statement, because I know that that's, but I'm looking if there are any other questions.
I have another question, please.
Mr. Mudge.
Have we approached Jamestown in terms of forming a district with North Kingstown for the elementary schools as well as the high school? You know, there's a lot of savings to be made on both communities with respect to that. I think you'll see that if you look at the Jamestown cost of middle school education and the elementary school education, that their expenditures are about $3,000 more per student than our elementary school student per pupil cost and our middle school student per pupil cost.
All right.
I have not approached them. I have approached them only about the pension, FY13 pension issue. That's all the school committee has authorized me to talk to them about, so...
Do you think we, do you think we, by the way...
I'm not personally against that idea, but I think that that has to be something that is negotiated between two communities, obviously. And I have not heard of any interest from Jamestown in having that happen, not yet anyway, so, you know.
Can I ask another question, please?
You may ask another question.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Does the state of Rhode Island, does the Department of Education have to approve this contract?
No, absolutely not. The contract is a contract that has been developed by the school committee. Both the town solicitor and I gave an opinion that it's up to the school committee to develop and to accept the contract, and that contract was developed by the school committee and adopted by the school committee. So no, the state of Rhode Island does not have to approve the contract.
This is, okay, I disagree with that, but I will ask the Department of Ed to oversee. I'd also like to ask, Dr. O'Shea, have we looked at the tuition rates, for example, of the corresponding, corresponding districts like Charahoe, Foster Gloucester, Bristol Warren, and those issues? For example, even we pay $11,500 to send a student to Coventry High School. We pay $11,500 a student to send kids to Coventry High School. Why do we pay so much?
I'm not aware of all the details of that formula. I would imagine it has something to do with the career and tech options that are available at Coventry, so, and I would imagine that their expenses are, you know, that that tuition rate is based on expenses, just as ours. And like I said, and I don't want to belabor at this point, this was negotiated... in good faith. It reflects what we spend for our students to go to our high school. And so, and, and it has been done long before I arrived. So I'm good with it. And I see much more to gain by having Jamestown in this community than, than what we stand to lose by quibbling over this bond issue or anything else you might have in mind.
Quibbling?
So, you know, that's the way I feel.
Dr. O'Shea?
All right, I am now going to let the committee members comment.
Okay, I have another question.
I'm going to start with Mrs. Alvinzado. We'll go down the table. Mrs. Alvinzado.
Okay, just briefly, I just want to make a couple quick comments and remind the public that what we've done with this contract, the last school committee, close look at this contract on multiple occasions, we, the tuition was increased, and that's something that gets lost in this discussion all the time. The tuition was just increased last year. Also, we instituted a one-year review of the contract, and this committee has talked about this contract no less than 10 times over the last year, that I can recall personally. And that's not a bad thing. Not a bad thing. That's fine. And I think that we are going to need the flexibility that we instituted in this contract going forward in the economic situation that we're in, depending upon what happens with pension reform. We may need to sit back at the table with Jamestown and talk about other issues, and I'm sure they'll be open to that. We don't need to do it every meeting, and we don't need to have the negative tone to it that we've had, unfortunately. So I just wanted to point out that we put the one-year review in, we did increase the tuition. Whether or not we'd like to see it higher, I think, I agree with what Dr. O'Shea is saying in terms of alienating and constantly pounding on this issue. The Jamestown students just add invaluable to the North Kingstown community, and it really is like one community. That's not to say we shouldn't discuss some of the financial issues. We have done that. That's all I have to say about it. Thank you.
Mr. Welch, would you like to say something?
No comment.
Mrs. Benson, would you like to say something?
All I'd like to say about the Jamestown-North Kingstown relationship, that is a relationship that has existed for, I would say, 40 years. And I thought Dr. O'Shea put out a very, very important statement when he said that we were going to exist as a landlord-tenant relationship. And I look at Dr. O'Shea as the caretaker, and he stated that he's perfectly satisfied with his tenants. And so, it does raise a question, the amount that they get from state aid and the, for each student, which is far surpass what we get. I think that should be looked into, but not tonight. So we have a lot of things, as you say. The landlord came tonight to put in a water heater, and he'll hook up the furnace next week. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Benson. Can I just, I forgot to add one thing, if you don't mind. Very briefly. Just very briefly, I do support the idea, and I hope Dr. O'Shea would consider, or Jamestown would consider, or, or other communities might consider, working together with North Kingstown in other areas. I think we're going to have to start looking at those kinds of relationships and arrangements as time goes on, as, as difficult as they may be at times, but also as beneficial as they are also.
I, I just would like to point out that I, I know there's a lot of interest from, from both, you know, everyone on the committee, to have the type of consolidated relationships, if you will, with other districts, and, and I wholeheartedly agree. I think North Kingstown is well-positioned for some of those kinds of things to happen. That doesn't mean that every district would become, you know, have 200 of their students at our high school necessarily, but I think there are a lot of areas that, of the kinds of business that school, school departments do, where we could find ways to consolidate with other districts. And I, I just feel like making the point on camera that, you know, we are open to talk about those kinds of things. I, I also understand that, you know, districts, I, I like the idea that my own kids come to North Kingstown High School, and I would feel a little unsure about sending my kids to another town unless I, you know, had already established a very good relationship with them as Jamestown has with us. So I can understand that there are towns like Narragansett and, and other local districts that may see a very good financial gain in consolidating with the town, with North Kingstown, but are a little reluctant to do so because they're afraid of not having their kids go to their own local school. But I do want all of the communities to know that we are certainly open to having those kinds of discussions.
Mr. Thompson.
I've changed my point of view of the way I've been looking at the whole issue of It took me five months from the fatal night of April 26th until late in September, because during those entire five months, I was simply focused on the student figure, the student money, the student dollars. And finally, fi, five months into my kind of shock of the way we were treated at that April 26th meeting, and, and the process by which this secretly arrived, that contract was slipped through, I, I finally heard someone say something that gave me a different perspective. And that was, instead of looking at it from the perspective of the student, I all of a sudden looked at it from the perspective of the teacher. And I imagined a teacher in the North Kingstown High School classroom who's teaching, let's say, an advanced class and has perhaps 17 North Kingstown students in that class. What's the impact on that teacher of, of what Jamestown is bringing into the class? Let's say, for an example, there are two, two or three Jamestown students are added to that number of North Kingstown students. Is that an unbearable burden? Absolutely not. We, we need to maybe provide two or three more textbooks, maybe a little bit of extra time in the library, and so on and so forth. But the way Jamestown students come into our school, we don't have to hire a brand-new teacher to teach all the Jamestown students. They're fitted into the classes. And there is one slide, and I wish, I don't know if you can click it from where you sit, but it's the slide that shows the 12.5, there it is, right there, teachers. And that was the, that was the issue that finally turned me around, where I could, could let go of the financial numbers that, that Bill talks about and which are, they're accurate numbers, I grant you that. But at the same time, I looked at the, at this number and said, you know what? With all these 200 kids that we're feeding in, they're not all going into one class, one school, one wing. They're being sprinkled throughout all the classrooms in North Kingstown High School. And, and they add so much to us, so much in terms of their preparation and their drive, their initiative, their interests, and so on and so forth. So I thought to myself, you know, first of all, every time I would try to bring up Jamestown, and I would get squashed by people yelling, "Point of order, point of order, point of order." It, it just, it just, it stretched it out. Anyone who felt that there was too much rhetoric about Jamestown, let me tell you, the people who were shouting, "Point of order," are the ones that caused that. Because they prevented me from representing the people who had sent me here to ask questions. And I had questions, and I was trying to ask the questions. And on the night of April 26th, I will assume that Mrs. Held from Jamestown was aware, when we walked into this room, that we were going to vote on a brand-new contract. I know that Dick Welch knew we were going to vote on a brand-new contract, but I can assure you, contrary to what Linda
Who's on the agenda.
Has said tonight, there was never, not once, did we ever receive a briefing on the status of this new Jamestown contract until that night, when they came around and threw it right here on the table in front of me, 10 minutes before that meeting, and I had no idea we were voting on it. Now, I've given up. I have told you, I've given up on trying to change what you have in the records and was reprinted in the patch, said that I voted for that contract on that night. And the reason that I've, have spoken out on this is because it was so unfair. It was such a violation of democratic process, of due process. But I've let it go. I have let it go. And I, I accept this contract. I think what we should do, quite frankly, we are in such trouble with our budget for fiscal 13. Even if the town gets their full tax levy up to the limit, up to the cap, the town and the school are still going to be in serious, serious financial trouble. I'm going to suggest to Dr. O'Shea that he would go back to Jamestown and, and say to them, you know what? Our school committee is in favor of you guys. We do like you here. We understand you may, you know, it's, it's to their, they're doing their due process by looking around and seeing if they can get a better deal. And, and they should do that. And if they do decide to do that, I'm not going to blame myself, or I'm not going to blame Bill Mudge, although I'm sure that we'll, we'll hear plenty about that. That's just a business decision that they're going to make. But if we, if we've got such a good deal for them, and I think we do, I think we should go sell this stuff to other people, other places. I think we should somehow try to take the really great courses that we have here in this high school and open them up to other, other students in other towns who would be willing to pay, whether it's $10,000 or $11,000, I, I don't know what the numbers are, I'm sorry. But whatever they are, it's a great deal for us. And this slide is the one that, that kind of changed my mind. And I didn't, I didn't think of it until about a month ago. Someone mentioned it, and I thought, yeah, I'll think of it from the teacher's point of view, not from the per-student point of view. You see it in a whole different way. Now, that's what I have to say. Thank you.
Mr. Mudge.
I, I couldn't agree with Joe Thompson more, that Mrs. Alvinzado said we reviewed this 10 times. This contract
No way.
Was never reviewed and discussed, not one
Not once.
Minute of discussion. Unfull discussion and open discussion was held in this contract back in, in April, and it was bootlegged through the committee as far as I'm concerned. But I will say one thing. We all have our, we all have our differences of opinion, there's no question about that. And I, I appreciate Mr. Thompson's and everyone else's comments, but we've got to come down to some agreement that we're here also, you know, for the students. But how about the NK taxpayer? Let's look at some of these monies, the $500,000, okay, that we get from state aid, that we share for every student in this school district. We haven't even looked at those numbers. The pension cost, we pay, we pay $2 million a year in our pensions for our teachers. The state pays that for us, over and above our cost. North Kingstown pays for that. Does Jamestown share, you know, that pension cost annually? No. But North Kingstown foots the bill. They don't contribute to that. You know, all the factors have not been weighed. And we, we're here, we're trying to, we're trying to, we're trying to squeeze our parent professionals and everything else and get $500,000 of cuts from them, and we won't even look at this thoroughly with all the economics. What we should have is a committee, get some analysts together, some town committee or school department, as well as town council reps, and really review this to see if it is in the best interest of, of our students in our town. And we should not negotiate from a position of fear. We should not do that. We should look and be fair. And we took the $262,000 out of the school budget, that was not a good thing for the taxpayers of North Kingstown.
Thank you, Mr. Mudge.
Thank you.
Mrs. Held, would you like to, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Alvinzado, would you like to say anything?
I just had a quick comment on this issue, kind of from the student perspective. I know on the slide it said a little bit ago about how our AP courses are enriched by the addition of the Jamestown students. And I think that's kind of hard to understand up here, but I've taken many AP classes, and I would say a very high, you know, if not disproportionate amount of students are from Jamestown. So they're all very high-achieving students, and I feel that the loss of that community would really be detrimental to our school in terms of state scores, in terms of SAT scores, and in terms of AP scores. And I think that while that seems not economic at first, I think that plummeting in our school's standing would be extremely economic, and that factor should be really considered more.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Held, would you like to say anything?
Um, well, I, it's a little hard to respond to some things because I am not, not having been a part of the negotiation committee for this formula, am not as familiar with the details as I might be, but our position, I believe, is that the formula reflects a fair determination of the costs that your district has because of our students. We believe that we do pay a fair share of the costs that you incur, and it, we want to continue to do that. We obviously have our own financial considerations. We are, have budgets that are under the same sorts of stresses that you, yours are. Mr. Mudge has pointed out that our costs, in some cases, are higher because we don't have some of the economies of scale that your district enjoys. So we negotiate carefully our tuition figures. We do believe that we are paying fair share. And sometimes the rhetoric, it causes some concern among members of my community that I hear from, that, that, and some of that filters to the students, which I hear about occasionally. So I think that, that rhetoric does have sometimes effects that it may, that may not be intended. So I think if we can continue to discuss the, our mutual positions professionally and, and with respect for each other's financial concerns, we can continue to work with a formula that we, we all can live with.
Thank you very much. One of the things, I'd like to give the last comment here is the, is the chair. This has been a very hot button issue for, I think, for every school committee that, that comes here. It's the sort of thing of, I've been on the school committee for five years, and every fall, this is the discussion. And so I think when Mrs. Alvinzado talks about us having discussed this 10 or so times, that's been over the course of a couple of years, and it seems like we're always discussing this issue. But that doesn't make it any less important. We have a wonderful collaboration that we've had between these two towns over the last 30 or 40 years. I'm, I'm not real sure how much it is. I've been on this, I have not been on the school committee that long. But, you know, in this time where we talk about schools joining together and looking at some sort of collaboration, the wonderful thing is that we've already done that. And the value that we're bringing to the North Kingstown community is not only the students who are smart, who add a lot to our sports, who are great to share with, but it's also the $1.4 million that comes into our budget. That is a tremendous resource. You know, I am disheartened when I hear that we have people, or students from Jamestown who get, who are experiencing classes that they, things that are not positive, that they aren't put in the best light. And I would hope that our community would realize that this is a fair contract that we have negotiated. You know, I, I look at Dr. O'Shea, and he's our new superintendent, we've just hired him in August, and what is the first thing that he jumps into and he's willing to tackle is this issue that comes up every year. So in that, I thank him. I thank Kathy Kaiser, and I thank Julia Held for once again revisiting this issue, knowing that it's going to cause a lot of tension in our community, but yet that still they have the patience to be able to explain where everything comes from. And if you go onto our website and you look under Business Administration at the top, you open up the Business Administration, and right there it is, the Jamestown contract that we have negotiated. Now, it is true, we don't have these rates that are up there, but if anybody wants those rates, you can email any of us and we will be able to pass that on to you. Dr. O'Shea can pass that on. You know, one of the things that I look at this contract is that, over the years, the misnomer has been that we have included a line that has said it's for the bond. And, and I know that this has caused all sorts of, of grappling around town, but we never sent that money on to the town. And so I call it a misnomer because it always came into the North Kingstown budget. It should have been something that was more of an administrative line, that is something that we made sure that we added on. It should never have been called bond. Because when you're a community and you have a building, you get certain benefits of having that public building in the community. that public building in the community. In our case, we have the KFR policy, which talks about that if you're a North Kingstown resident, you get a reduced rate if you are a charitable donation in using our buildings. But Jamestown doesn't get that. And so if they truly had been making a bond payment, they would have been able to get that under that policy. But that's why I say it was a misnomer. Because while everybody labeled it that, it never went to the town, a better, a better name for that should have been, that it covered our administrative costs. And so this contract, if anything, I think it gives it the proper name, because all the money is staying within the school department, and it is the sort of thing that it is going to cover the cost of administrative, the Dr. O'Jay, the people who work in different places. So that's why I feel as if this contract is a fair contract, it covers our expenses. I know there's going to be a lot of discussion here. I think that now would be the time that we move on. I know people are going to say, no, no, I want to say one more thing. I would say, let's move on to the rest of the part of our agenda, and we can talk about this, well, we will put this to bed for today.
Adam, could I just make a comment on a couple of things you said, because I think they were inaccurate.
I don't look at this as a time where we are going to have a debate format.
Well, see, we never get to talk about the details.
The superintendent has given his report, we have had time to question him.
Here we go again.
And now we've each had time to comment.
But when people make, when people make comments that are incorrect, we should change them.
You know, Mr. Mudge, none of us interrupted with your comments that maybe somebody felt incorrect.
I don't want to interrupt. What I'd like to do is comment on the inaccuracy of your comments, the inaccuracy. For how many years did we pay for Jamestown?
Now I'm going to move on to routine items.
How many years did Jamestown?
I'm moving on to routine items.
We spent our state aid on Jamestown.
Can I make another comment?
Yes, Dr. O'Jay.
I also just want to, even though it's not listed on the agenda under my comments, I do want to make a point that at the next school committee meeting, I will be making a presentation about plans for, a proposal for plans for Davisville Elementary School. And I have a meeting set up to share some of those ideas with members of the Davisville neighborhood. And that will be at Davisville Middle School on October 20th, I believe that's a Thursday night at 6:30. So if you, any member of the community is welcome, particularly those folks from the Davisville neighborhood who have been very concerned about the fate of that building. So I would love to have their input on these ideas before we go prime time here at the school committee, and of course, give the school committee some time after that to hear more feedback after the October 25th, as to the ideas put forth that night.
Lorraine, do we have, yes, Mrs. Benson.
We received a healthy place in design, Dr. O'Jay, and they have listed October 12th event at Davisville.
That's a different event. That's not what I'm, that's the Wellness Committee. What I'm proposing is a discussion about the fate of Davisville Elementary School over the years.
This is all the communications I received in that packet. So what you're announcing here tonight is, you're going to have to be in Davisville, along with the Davisville parents, to talk about the fate of Davisville Elementary School. I want to get it correct.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
On October 20th at 6:30 PM.
October the 20th, the 20th. Now, we're getting proper communications out to the people.
I've already, I'm using this platform to start the communication, but I've also sent an email to the Davisville List Serve. That was a group of concerned parents who talked to me even before I became superintendent about keeping the communication alive with that group. And a number of neighborhood folks from the Davisville area signed on to that List Serve. So they have gotten this communication. I've received some emails back from them, so I know they got it. And I'm encouraging them as well to tell any neighbors who don't happen to be on that List Serve.
Well, thank you very much, because at the last...
And of course, this will be taken up the 25th at this school committee meeting, and I would not be looking for a vote on that night. I would be looking for a two-week period where people from Davisville or anywhere in the community could, you know, register their opinions with all of you before you come to a vote two weeks later.
I wasn't thinking in terms of a vote, but I was just fixing to compliment you, and even though you wasn't superintendent at that time, but you're carrying out the plans of the promises that we made to the people in that community about the use of the school. And nothing is greater than a person being able to keep his word when you're dealing with the public and taxpayers. They, we get off of crumches sometimes because we can't do nothing but pay tax. So who do we take it out on, the way that people use it? So thank you, and I would suggest if the budget holds it, that we take out a nice ad in the papers to advertise this, and make sure that the community is more than aware of it. Because we sometimes rely too much on electronics and their, I did a survey on the communities and the age of people in North Kingstown, and to some of your dismay, some of them will sit all day at the computer and twiddle and tweedle and get their news from it. So they have other ways of doing it. Because we are very, very mature and age-wise community. I think if some of you would look into that, you'd understand a few more things.
Thank you, Mrs. Benson.
You're welcome, Madam President.
Lorraine, could we have the executive session?
Yeah, no votes for tonight because we're going to reconvene after the meeting.
All right. All right, we are now on to the consent agenda. Are there items that people would like to exclude? Mrs. Avanzado.
C2 and 4, please.
E1.
Mrs. Benson, B1. Is there anything else to be excluded?
D1 and 2. And B2?
I'd like to...
Mr. Mudge?
D1 and D2.
Okay, that was also said by Mr. Welch.
Sorry, I missed that. For comments, to put comments on, E2 and, 2 and, E5 and, 9 or 11. That would be, it's on page, 6 would be 11. So that is, I don't see all the numbers here, but that would be E11, I guess.
All right, is there anything else? Yeah, I'm looking...
Did you get C1?
No.
Oh, C1, please.
What am I?
MP.
I'm sorry, I didn't...
10, F, MP.
So not all of E10, just F and P?
Yep.
Make a motion to approve the rest of the consent agenda.
Second. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? All right. Mrs. Benson, you excluded B1, homeschooling.
Okay. I'm always concerned when I see homeschooling, because some of us seem to raise so much concern about other forms of education, charter schools and so forth. And I have asked with this committee, along with the other committee, that for some reason, we need to know, what is it about our schools that parents choose to homeschool? And I was given one flip answer that it's their rights, that administrator, and it is their rights, but when parents tend to do anything, I was waiting to be finished reading. I was waiting to... When parents tend to do anything with their kids, I know as a parent myself, you always do it with the idea that this is best. So while I chose homeschooling, I would like for us to appoint maybe a committee or someone and get out a questionnaire that we could send to those parents, because we have their names and addresses, that homeschool our kids. And maybe it would be something that, you know, we're the ones responsible for making sure that the children get an education, but it may be something that we're overlooking. But I get one continued answer when you ask people about homeschooling, and I'm not going to say it here tonight, and I'm sure some of you get the same thing. Because there is a difference between homeschooling and religious-based schooling with parents. So that's why I put that on, so maybe when Dr. O'Jay gets help, that that would be one of the things, just a short questionnaire, if you want the support of the, you want the members of the, a member of the school committee to work with you, or you feel that it's something that you and your administration should do. Just a little short, little short questionnaire. Give us one, two, three reasons as to why you choose, chose homeschooling over the other.
Mrs. Benson, as Assistant Superintendent, I've been the person who was overseeing the request for homeschooling, and there is presently not anything on our paperwork that would force a family to declare why they are doing that. In fact, I believe it's probably against the law to even ask. You know, from the discussions that I've had, when people have offered it, I do feel that there's a number of different reasons why they would. In some cases, people may feel like they don't want their students in public school or in any private school, but there is a whole myriad of reasons, from religious reasons to just feeling like they want to educate their students on their own. And by law, it's meant to be an item that we are to respect and not to question. And there are even groups of homeschooling advocates in the area that really look out for those kinds of, the paperwork that goes home from the school system. A couple of years ago, when I first became Assistant Superintendent, they made themselves known to me. And, you know, anytime there was almost any communication from the district, in some cases, people would feel a little threatened by that. And in some cases, it's people who feel they don't want any version of the government dealing with the education of their kids. And that is their right. And, you know, I have been told, and in the research that I've done, that it is the law that we must respect that, and I'm good with that. We ask that they simply let us know that that is their intention, and that's pretty much all that we can ask.
I'm very much aware of that.
Just wanted to fill you in on, you know, what I've learned.
I'm very much aware of that. I think it was an article this week in the paper, last week one, concerning the League of Homeschooling as related to the League of Charter Schools. One more question I would like to ask. These parents pay tax, and we have so much designated for each child. Do we contribute financially to their education?
No, we do not.
We do not?
No. And not unless they access our schools. In some cases, a homeschooling student may participate, say, in a particular class at the high school, or even on a team, it is in their right to do so.
That's very...
But other than that, we do not pay them for any of the work that they're doing, or provide them any funding for homeschooling.
How about books and stuff like that?
I believe they can access books if they so wish, but often...
Anyway, it's a big stadium in our part, anyhow. We are...
And that's similar to private school books. If any resident of the town needs books, whether they're private or homeschool, which is another form of private, I guess, they can access books. But that doesn't mean that they all necessarily ask for them either.
All right.
B1, please. Could I ask a question?
Okay, there's a motion on the floor to...
He's asking a question, we play you to what we have.
Yes, I see. I see. There's a motion on the floor for approval of B1, and there is a second. Mr. Thompson.
I didn't hear the motion. Who was the motion maker?
Mr. Welch and Mrs. Avanzado was the second. Mr. Thompson.
Dr. O'Jay, I just had a question on this particular one. It's been my understanding that most homeschooling requests are at a much younger age, and that if anything, by about maybe the seventh or eighth grade, the parents are looking to bring the students back into the public schools. This one is going out from the high school, at the high school level, and it says new, so it's...
It doesn't mean they're leaving the high school. It means that the school that they would be connected to, if they should have questions or any ties to the community, would be North Kingstown High School. It doesn't mean they're leaving the high school when it says that. So this particular student listed here is a ninth grader, so therefore their contact school, if they should have any questions about resources they can access in the district, would be North Kingstown High School.
But is this the first year they're going out?
That, I'm assuming so, because it's new, but that could mean this is a person that may have just moved to our district as well. So I don't know for sure that they're necessarily leaving North Kingstown. They could be leaving a private school, or they could have just moved into the community, and the request is new to us. And that happens too. Often, you're right, Mr. Thompson, that the younger students are, we have more requests for younger students than we do for high school students. Oftentimes, people who are homeschooling don't necessarily feel that they have the expertise to teach a high school curriculum, but they might feel a little more comfortable with the younger grades. But that's not across the board. There are a lot of situations that, for many, many different reasons, people will decide even students who are doing exceptionally well at the high school, may decide for one year or for many years, they want to change to homeschool. It could be for all sorts of reasons. So it's not that uncommon.
All right, we have a motion on the floor and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? We move on to C1. Mr. Thompson.
C1.
Approval of minutes of September 13th, 2011. Do I have a motion and for approval? Motion to approve?
Second.
Okay. Now.
Just a couple of points. On the, the idea of putting transfers, there was a discussion back and forth, and I believe it was stated that administratively, we want to put all personnel actions on the agenda and to have them included in the packet, which I consider to be our kind of official record of the meeting. And there was a question whether some needed to be on and some didn't, but I, we never really, we never came to a conclusion. So I just wanted to ask, are we going to be putting all personnel actions on the agenda? Such as, this would have been on page 20 in the packet, it was a personnel action, there was just a transfer. So the comment was made, wow, we shouldn't put these on the agenda, but I think we should.
I think it's, I'm not sure if it's in this particular agenda, but, we're in the minutes here, but at a certain point, I think I made a comment that I believe that we should, just for our own auditing reasons, that this is the place where an auditor would look to see that an action has been taken.
Yeah. So we're going to continue to do that.
Yeah, we will list, we will list items as a transfer when they are one, just so people know.
Mr. Mudge?
Further down.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You had Mr. Welch requesting the superintendent provide a list of potential cuts in dollar amounts at the first meeting in October, and I would be very much interested in seeing that, having that going into our combined meeting with the town. Further down, we have, Mr. Draper does, the department heads do their own grant writing, it says. it says. And I think with our financial extremity that we're in for, not next year, this year, and, and also particularly for fiscal 13 coming up, I think there should be a systematic approach to grant writing, and, and I would hope that it's, it's well coordinated, because I think we're going to need it.
All right. Anything else, Mr. Thompson?
Did the, um, did the RFP for, for the cafeteria, did that, did that specify that we're going to retain the food service manager position? The MKS? Thank you.
Yes.
And, that's it. Thank you.
All right, all those in favor of approving C1? Say aye.
Comment, please. What do you?
Yes, do you have a comment or a question?
With respect to the, whoops, lost my place here. With respect to the comment just that Thompson made, you know, I'd like to clarify, just for the heck of it, that, what I brought up again tonight is, you know, there's an old saying, if anything's fixed, you know, and ain't broken, don't fix it. And in terms of, uh, I, I don't think we have any legal obligation as a school committee to prevent transfers from one department to the other, whether it's any teaching or whether it's our custodial staff or anyone else. So I don't think it has a place on the agenda, and I, I'd almost like to get a legal opinion on that, because I think there's another point in here, I'll cover later, it, you know, basically covers the same thing.
All right, well, thank you. Your comments are noted.
I would like a follow-up on, on the, on the advice, whether it's a legal requirement, because I honestly don't think it is, and we shouldn't encumber the superintendent to put that stuff in there.
All right, we can get response on that later. All right, all those in favor of approving C1, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
No.
Thank you. Item C2, Linda Avinzado.
Uh, yes, I can take two and four together, just, I wasn't present at the meeting, just wanted to abstain from the vote, so I'll make a motion at this time to approve those.
Second.
All right, all those in favor of approving C2 and 4, say aye.
I have one question, and that's under C2. We're, we're approving right now?
Yes.
Um, it says that we've done some follow-up regarding a letter about charter school relief, and that one of the suggestions was a subcommittee, this was suggested by Senator Sheehan, that we have a subcommittee to pursue this with the League of Cities and Towns and the Association of School Committees. Has any, have we gone further with that? Can we put that on an agenda to talk about, coming up with a committee, subcommittee?
I'll make a motion to.
We're not looking for a motion. There's a motion on the floor.
Not now, just for the future.
I will take that down, you're, we can discuss that.
Thank you. That's all I've got.
So, motion on the floor to approve C2 and 4. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
No.
Okay, brings us up to D1. Mr. Welch.
Uh, yeah, just, I had a conversation with Ned Draper today regarding this lease or a purchase, and I just wanted to express to the committee that this is a capital expenditure, and where we're going to be looking for dollars going down the road, I'm not, I'm not at all concerned about the, the need for the truck and the value presented in the bid and so forth, but I think with this or any other capital expenditure that we might be able to lease, so it reduces our upfront capital expense in a budget that is already in trouble and going forward, the lease would allow us to use less capital out of our budget and at a later date, when, when the budgets are hopefully easier to work, then buy out the lease. Ned's not in agreement with me on that subject. This is not a lot of money, but when we're looking down the road for nickels and dimes, not taking money and spending it on a capital expenditure like this vehicle or anything else of, of this nature that we could do a lease, I, I think we have to think about that. And so I'm just, just wanted to express that to the committee, so they think about it going forward.
I'm going to administration comment, and then I, I do see Mr. Thompson and Mr. Mudge. I see your hands up.
Yeah, to, to go to Mr. Welch's point, one of the issues with the truck, and you can see it from the history of the one that we're replacing, we got, I believe, about 14 years out of the vehicle we're moving on with. And, and I do think pretty consistently, the, the maintenance force is, been pretty good about the way they've used the vehicles and the, and the life cycle we've gotten out of them. If, if you were to ask me, how long do I think a truck would be figured, I would say six, maybe eight years. So to get that kind of life out of it, and the fact that we think we're going to need it for, you know, for a decade or more, that's why I explained to Committee Member Welch, I think that we would be reasonable in, in an outright purchase. You know, when you do the math on that, it's in the order of 2,600, 2,700 a year that we're depreciating, so it's, it's a pretty substantial value.
Mr. Thompson?
Uh, just wanted to ask if this was the, I was confused whether this was the actual low bid, because there were some add-ons. What was the low bid of this, of these five?
The low bid.
Did we choose that? Is that what we're voting on, the low bid?
Correct.
Okay.
The, the low bid with the specifications was the 36,183. And I believe there's a note there for utilizing Rhode Island vendors for the plow and the toolbox body, moves the price up to $37,190.
And is that what we're voting on, the 37,1?
Well, I gave the committee the low bid number, because that's, that's the straightforward low bid. The bidder included information for utilizing Rhode Island vendors.
Mr. Mudge?
With respect to that, I think if you're going to award a contract, you know, if it's $37,190, it ought to say it, number one. Number two, I'm not going to vote for this, because we've been thinking about consolidation with the town or whatever, and it would seem to me it's premature to start adding capital, like Mr. Welch said. And possibly we should wait for a year before we make a decision to either lease or rent an additional vehicle, given that we're not sure what the status of the potential consolidation of the town would be. And perhaps the town would have enough vehicles to, to cover this expense, so, you know, $37,190 is a few dollars. And also, the funds will be, it says in here, will be from the CIP. Well, there's no funds in the CIP, the Capital Improvement Plan. We have a school capital reserve fund, which really, unfortunately, isn't a fund per se. But my point is, are you asking for money from the school, what is designated School Capital Reserve Fund, not the appropriated budget? Okay? You're not, I, I think you're, you're not requesting $37,000 from the current year appropriation to the school department. Because this type of thing should be from the School Capital Reserve Fund, which we don't even carry on our budget, unfortunately, in our, in our presentations and accountability for funding. So, you know, although I'm voting against it, we ought to define whether this is out of the, this year's general fund budget that was appropriated by the council, or is it out of school capital reserve funds?
I'm, I'm a little concerned about some of the resistance to this, because, one, we, we need a truck. It's particularly going to be helpful to us once we do plowing, but obviously, these trucks get a lot of use, so it's, it's not like it's something that we just feel that we can do without for a year and waiting that long. Also, we, we don't have a bid right now in front of us for a lease, so I'm worried about that, and, you know, I think there is good justification for going this route. So I, I guess I would say, you know, we can, we can vote on it. I'm, I'm recommending that we vote for it, because we need the truck. If, if, if it does not get voted up, we'll come back with something else later on, but we certainly need this truck.
Dr. To speak to the question of the funding source, the funding source is School Capital Reserve.
Mrs. Benson.
Mr. Draper, you through, see that? Did you answer, did you complete what you had to say? Okay, because each time someone adds to the conversation, you get a little more. And as Mr. Welch said, maybe we should lease, and if we needed that urgent this week, and we don't, this year, and we don't have a plan before us to lease, that's because leasing hadn't entered the picture. Did you ever think about that along with the consolidation?
We did, we did not consider leasing. As far as consolidation, based on the number of locations that we plow and the kind of work we would do with this truck, we, we thought there was necessity.
Okay, even though if we do consolidate, we would need this extra truck.
Well, I wouldn't, I wouldn't characterize it as an extra truck. I would characterize it as.
But we'd need another truck to even work efficiency, efficient with this consolidation. That's the question I'm trying to ask.
For replacement of a, of a current truck, that, you know, even if.
I'm not speaking about the replacement.
Right, right, but you, the, right now, there's no consolidation plan even on the table. So it, it would be sometime before anything were even proposed, much less approved. And what we do know is that we have a truck that went bad, and it would be prohibitive to just simply pay for the repairs and, and the truck of that age. So we're thinking it's, it's more appropriate to, to purchase a truck, we'll have it for the long term. Over, over the term of the truck, the payments will not be so prohibitive to, you know, really put us in jeopardy right now. So that's, that's the recommendation.
Dr. OJ?
Mrs. Benson, then Mr. Mudge, then Mr. Welch.
Okay, I want to continue with my series of questions. Now, forget the word consolidation, but think about all the other extents that we as a school committee, we as a council, and we as citizens are going to have. And there's just, I'm going to say about a truck, the same thing I say about kids. It's cheaper to repair, to get a new truck than it is to repair an old truck. So I'm not suggesting that you send it over to the council to get it repaired, but the thing about it is, how can we ever think about consolidation if we continue to buy, the town continue to buy, and we continue to use those words further on down the road? We won't have nothing to consolidate. Everybody will be equal. So if we need a truck that badly, and we got to have a truck, this is October, and we're subject to have snow, since it's going to be like that, and we don't know what the weather's going to be, it's been kind of thing, and we got to have that truck, let's postpone it, get the figures for a six-month lease, because we'll never get consolidation if we both gonna get both houses equal to the same, why consolidate? You're not gaining anything from it.
Mr. Mudge?
It's my understanding that we contracted out our snow plowing services, you know, when the town, you know, would either provide, you know, do the contracting for us, or even if they didn't feel they needed contractors, they'd do the plowing themselves. So I agree with Mrs. Benson, it's that basis of buying a truck, you know, for snow plowing, it doesn't seem consistent with using the available tools at hand, like contracting out via the town for snow plowing, plowing services, and/or even requesting the town to do this with perhaps an existing truck.
I can, I can speak to, right now, we know that in a snow event, the town does not have adequate resources to plow our parking lots, particularly in times when a four to six-inch event prior to school opening. We do utilize a contractor for the middle schools and the high school, however, the elementary schools are the responsibility of the district.
Why is that?
Because we're able to handle the elementary schools.
No, no, no. Why don't we contract the whole thing out? I mean, it doesn't make sense, to contract part of it out. I mean, you say the town doesn't have the resources. The town has the contractual resources to contract out these functions.
We, we contract out as a school district, the plowing of the high school and the middle school.
We don't go through the town?
No.
Then why don't we contract out the elementary schools? And why don't we work with the town, so we have one contracting service that we can integrate?
Because we're able to effectively handle the elementary schools, the contractor we utilize, we found it's worked out well the way we're doing it. Now, I can say, in an event when a contractor would not be called, say, an icing event or two inches of snow or something to that effect, those are times when we have to make difficult decisions around 5 o'clock. The number of plow trucks that we have at our disposal to make passes can be the difference between a delay, a cancellation of school, that sort of thing.
Yeah, but we're contracting out a service to the town to provide the, the ethic, it's a level of effort. So why can't we contract to the town for these services, and if there are emergency services, the provision of contractor do that? And we'll never get the consolidation this way.
Mr. Welch?
Yeah, I would just, there's been enough conversation on this. One of the things that I've always objected to is coming to a meeting and having to make a decision that night on things of this nature, and not having enough time to think it through and then come back, especially when it's not an emergency. Now, so I would suggest, at the pleasure of this committee, that we table this till the next meeting and have some questions answered, such as what has been discussed, the, the possibility of a, of a lease, but it wouldn't be for six months, that, you couldn't afford that lease, that would, you might just won't buy it. A lease, so that we could think that part through, whether or not the town would be willing to do the contracting for the snow plowing, et cetera, get some of those answers for us to be able to think that through for the next meeting and vote on it. I think we, I don't think that two weeks is going to make a big difference in if we go forward with the purchase or lease and getting the vehicle in time for the snow. So I'm, I'm asking whether or not the table would be interested in tabling this until the next meeting.
Why don't you make the motion?
I'm okay with that, just so everyone knows. I'm fine with.
Motion to table?
I second.
Second.
All right.
I'd like to, after making the second, I would like one thing explained. What is the smallest amount of lease time, Mr. Welch, so that I can gear my thinking to?
You, you probably wouldn't want to look at anything less than three to five years.
Why don't we let Mr. Draper explore that option, so that he can find us the best deal?
I have a suggestion for Mr. Draper, that he would run an ad in the local paper, because if you see six trucks in North Kingston, five of them got snow plows on them, and they're people who really use this season to make money. So advertise for someone, so we'll have an idea, because we can give them our work now, or we can feed them at the soup kitchen.
All right, there's a motion on the floor, and a second. All those in favor of tabling the items, say aye.
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 All those opposed? Thank you. We are now on to D2, the Wickford Middle School Boiler Tube Repair. Mr. Welch?
Yes, and again, this is an item that I spoke with Mr. Draper about today.
Yes, and again, this is an item that I spoke with Mr. Draper about today. Mr. Draper, you were going to try and get me efficiency on the current situation?
Yes, I was not able to find an efficiency on the current gas-fired configuration. The last efficiency we had was when it was an oil fired. And that was probably '06, '07 was the last time that was that way. So that's, that's something we'll have to get information on. At the time of the oil firing, the percentage was 86 percent. And I couldn't say how that correlates to a gas, a gas-fired burner.
Okay. The, the question that I had for Mr. Draper was the longevity of the boilers that we have, and how much time this was going to buy us, and whether or not they, they should be replaced, even though we don't have the money at this point, because every day you fire them up, if the efficiency isn't up there, that you're paying for the new boiler and the, and the cost of fuel and operation. Fortunately, we have someone that monitors that school on the name of Terry Merkel, who is a wizard in trying to save this district money on things like heat and electric. When, when, and if Mr. Merkel retires, we're in trouble, because he is the, he's the lifesaver for this district. I make a motion to vote in favor of this repair.
Second. There's a motion on the floor. I see hands. Mrs. Benson, Mr. Thompson.
What I was going to say, that this has been on the agenda before, and there was a decision made between buying, and I think we even had civilians, when I refer to civilians, I mean, not non-elected officials in, who had experience with various boilers, and they had recommended it. We chose to have this repaired, and that was some four or five months ago, and we're just getting around to this, and it's about to go in. I know the chipmunks are feeling their home. We'll need the boilers pretty soon.
Mr. Thompson?
I'm, I'm asking Mr. Draper a question, and I didn't get there.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We're just getting around to this.
I didn't realize you were, you were asking a question. Go ahead, Mrs. Benson, ask your question.
If you recall the conversation we had, along with the committee concerning the boilers at Whitford, and it was voted that we would not get a new boiler, that we would repair this one. Are we just getting around to seeing about the repair work?
I, I don't recall that conversation.
You don't remember Mr. Grandy and Mr. Welch's committee coming in, making recommendations, and talking about the boilers at Whitford?
I, I think that might have been more generally to the, to the overall facilities planning.
Yes, it came out of the facilities committee. But we voted to, to have them repaired and everything.
You're right, Mrs. Benson, and Mr. Welch was just reminding me why that happened.
We had to wait for the Hartford-
Yes, yes, Hartford.
To do an engineering report on them, to make sure that they were insurable.
Okay, that's all I wanted to know.
That took the time. We were in a big hurry to get the answer, but we had to wait for the engineering report to come back.
Okay.
That's why we're late.
Okay, I just wanted to know, because that was-
You're 100% right.
That was presented three or four months ago.
I stand corrected, though. I was, I misunderstood.
Yep, you're right. Mr. Thompson?
Is this work going to be done before we need the, we're into the heating season? Is it something that can be completed? I notice it says Monday through Friday, eight to 4:30, that's during school hour.
As soon as we get the approval, I'll send them an email to, to proceed.
Yeah, we don't have any time, Joe.
All right, so there's a motion on the floor, and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you. We are now down to E2. Mr. Mudge?
That was a comment I was making earlier regarding approval of transfers again. And I'd just like to consult the, our council to comment on that, because I, I just don't think we need to put that in there.
Mr. Thompson?
Well, I've already stated that I think that it's important that we do, so I'd just make a motion to the effect that we continue to list the approval of transfers, every type of personnel action we're putting on the agenda, I'd like to continue to see them on the agenda. That's my motion.
So are you making a motion to also approve this particular one too, Mr. Thompson?
If I can roll that in, sure.
Second.
All right.
What's the motion, please?
Combined motion.
Any further discussion?
What is your motion?
Mrs. Evans Otto.
It's a quick point. I don't think a lot of districts put as much information on personnel as we have on there. And I don't know whether that's a, and I'm sure what Mr. Mudge might be referring to is kind of a, not really a privacy concern, but something along those lines. But I don't think I've ever heard anyone say that they didn't like having their name on there and all that information, and their pay rate and all that. I don't think other districts do that, and that may be the concern. I don't know, I actually don't know where I stand on it. I just was-
We're guilty of being open.
Yeah, it was very open and transparent. There's a lot of information on there, but-
It's just a little legality of the issue.
Okay.
That's all, you know.
There is, there is not a law that says we have to do this. Like I mentioned before, we're doing it in order to make our records very clear for auditing purposes, so people know exactly who is hired for which job. It's, it's basically to make our audits transparent and clean.
Just confirming, there's no law saying you can't do it either.
Right, right. There's no law that says you should or shouldn't.
All right, there's a motion on the table, and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
All right, that brings us to E5. Mr. Mudge?
Same, same point.
It was the same point, basically, except that I was concerned about B, 5B, non-budgeted.
The administration like to comment?
Yeah, where, what, where is this money coming from?
You know, I don't have a comment on that right now. I guess I could, I could look at it. I didn't, I didn't notice that myself.
I'd check, I'd check on D2 also. We've got two non-budgeted items.
Is D2, I'm sorry, 5, E5?
B.
D, is that something we have already?
B.
No, no, I'm talking about D. Is that something that we had already approved, Dr. Ogier, when we made a motion prior to this committee, where we had, maybe about a month ago, where we had Mrs. Danette in here?
It, it could very well be, but I'm not absolutely certain right now. Can I, I'd ask that to come back with these two in two weeks, just to make sure you have all the right information.
Yeah, am I just being clear?
No, I, I check all of these, but I obviously missed the words "non-budgeted" on those two. I didn't sense there was anything out of order here, and it may very well be back to those that you're pointing out, Mrs. Page, but I can, I can check on those and get back to you.
Can we have a motion to approve 5A and C?
How many?
No, we just, we just-
So moved.
Okay, and a second? Second?
May I?
Do we have any other discussion on 5A and C? Mr. Thompson?
Is this, is 5A what you're calling the truant officer? Is that 5A?
No.
No.
Uh, no.
Okay.
It's in the bottom of page three.
I'm looking on packet page 60, E5A.
I, I don't know. This is page, done from the same packet you had, and it says page three down at the bottom.
Approval of non-certificated. Approval of appointments.
No.
Mine has a truant officer, salary 24,000, no benefits, effective September 28th.
You're talking about 5, E5?
Page 60.
Packet page 60.
The same thing.
Right, and I'm asking, we have a motion and a second on the floor to approve A and C. I'm showing you the agenda, Mr. Thompson.
Oh, no, this isn't the agenda. This is on a packet, page, page 60.
Well, Mr. Thompson, your backup is incorrect, because I have the same backup you have, and it's incorrect.
Well, I just want to make a comment about it. Have we voted on it yet, or is it still up for vote?
No, I, we have a motion on, on the floor to approve 5A and C, and I guess we would table B and D. A and C are budgeted. All right, if there's no other comments for the budgeted items, that's what we're taking the vote on, the two budgeted people. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Okay.
What you're saying leaves the budget.
Correct, budgeted. We just voted on the budgeted items, and we will wait until next committee meeting for the non-budgeted items. Okay, that brings us to DF, Mr. Mudge. I'm sorry, E10F.
Well, could, I'm sorry, if you was following Mr. Thompson, regarding 5 again, what are we, we approve C, or A and C, right? And we're holding in abeyance B and D?
I think we need a motion on that.
Yeah, we need to table those.
Motion to table. Motion to table B and D?
Second.
A second.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, now we're moving to E10F. Oh, I had it done as, as Mr. Mudge, but maybe, okay, I know, I'm sorry, Dick Welch?
I just had a question for clarification purposes. We have a school nurse in an elementary school with a master's degree. We, we have a nurse in this school that is a non-teacher. She has a mast, she now has a master's degree. Can somebody enlighten me as to what benefit this is to the school?
Certification, I would think.
I think this is by contract.
I know, I know these, these matters are contractual in terms of, obviously, something that is job-related, a master's degree. I, I don't know to what extent, whether this is a master's in nursing, or master's in education, or-
Well, she'd have to be an RN to have the job in the first place and be certified to have the job. So my question is-
I'm assuming, I'm assuming that this is in line with the, the contract that we have. But I, I don't know further details I could find out for you, but I don't know them right now.
Okay, and I just want to continue that I also had-
And, and by the way, I'm not sure that, once I do know the details, if that would change the contract either, so.
I understand that. And then I go on to 10P. I also exempted, and I look at an elementary school teacher with a master's degree plus 30 credits. And again, I ask, you know, I would like to look at the situation as it applies across the board, that we're given stipends for additional education that have some bearing on the position that the person holds, and how it positively affects the district. Now, just to say it's part of the contract, as far as I'm concerned, in the budget that we're going to have to fashion, again, we need to be looking at everything. And one of the things is, are we just granting, because the contract says we have to grant a stipend because someone got some additional education, which may not have any bearing on what they're being employed for? So that's why I exempted both of these, because I think we need to look at this. Thank you.
Before I take further comments, Mrs. Benson and Mr. Mudge, do I have a motion on the table to approve?
Motion to approve?
Second.
DF and P. Okay, I believe that this is, as per our contract, that when an employee does go up in increased degree, that this is, that has been the calculation. And so in order to make any changes, we would have to change the contract. Okay, Mrs. Benson?
I respectfully disagree with Mr. Welch's comment, and I will tell you why, from an educator's standpoint. The young lady, the teacher, that was here tonight from the junior high school, that's a crew leader, and you don't get all of those when you just get your master's, Mr. Welch. You, it is a continuing course. And when I first came to Rhode Island and got a teacher's certificate, you could have a bachelor's, and you got a lifetime certificate. Education is constantly changing, and when we see evidence of learning and things, these are workshops that are being given. Are they concentrating in those areas? So that's why work above a master's is benefiting these people.
Mr. Mudge, I'm sorry.
I call this a person being in education and continuing to keep up with it and do the process, progress of it. I could explain that, because, see, I wouldn't have known why you wouldn't eat pine instead of hickory wood, if you were doing something. So it's very important to the success of these schools.
Mr.-
The education of our children.
Mr. Mudge?
As I understand what Mr. Welch said, is, is that, you know, when you get accreditation and paid, that the courses are relevant to the, the instruction and so forth that you're teaching. And, and, you know, I fully support that. Not sure we can go about it, but, but nonetheless, I do have a, you made a good point on the school nurse teacher. You know, we, we have a lot of school nurse teachers, and perhaps it's time for us to look at this function. I know it's a contract issue, but it's something that we need to address, is do we need school nurse teachers, or do we need nurses in the schools? And it's maybe a significant reduction in, in expenditures if we had nurses in the school, and they weren't under the union contract and governed by nurse teachers. So I, I-
State law.
But again, perhaps that's something that maybe we should be going to our legislators with, saying, hey, we need to get these, you know, put them up, ask for these changes. I mean, this is a lot of money we're dealing with.
Mrs. Evans Otto, and then Mr. Thompson.
Two quick things. One, it's 9:05, and we're still on the consent agenda. Not to devalue anyone's comments, but if you agree with the previous person's comments, ditto or something like that should suffice. We're, again, on the consent agenda. I do concur with what Mr. Welch just said. I do think we have to look at things in a new light during contract negotiations. There's nothing wrong with asking our legislators to lift some of these laws that may not make sense, that cost us a lot of money, and we're going to have to as time goes on. Thank you.
Mr. Thompson?
Ditto to Mrs. Benson.
All right, we've had, I think, well, I think you already got it.
We're talking about finance, and I think each person that asked the question had a reason. And Mr.-
Point of order, Mrs.-
We can't even have bus drivers of school age without them having certain education. So it's education that these people are getting that's essential for the operation of our school. We shouldn't have a person riding-
Point of order, Madam Chairman.
Okay.
What is your point of order?
My point of order is, everyone has spoken once. We don't need to go back and forth. We know we disagree on this point. We've made, everyone has made their point.
Well, the more we can clarify, the better it would be.
I have, I have asked people before, to, we're not going to do a back and forth. We have a motion on the floor, and a second. All those in favor of-
Point of order.
All those-
Point of order.
What's your point of order?
Point of order is, this is a democracy, and if we have questions going back and forth, we ought to be able to address other members' comments.
And I would go forth with a question, but I'm not getting any questions. I'm getting lots of comments.
Well, it doesn't, well, you, you, your form is to, your form is to complete the discussion.
All right, thank you very much. We're going to get out of order.
Change the punctuation.
So here we go. There is a motion on the floor, and there is a second. All those in favor of approving the, the advanced degree increments, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Great, okay. Now come to E11. Mr. Mudge?
I don't recall a budget, okay, that, that talked about appointments of after-school facilitators.
It's the 21st Century Grant, it's grant funded?
Oh, it's grant. But again, I, we never approved a grant budget, that's what I'm saying.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve?
Could I finish my statement, please?
You may make answer question.
The question is, you know, what is the grant budget? We never approved-
It's for my chance to floor, Mrs. Benson.
What is, what is the grant budget that, that we're referring to? What is the amount of money? How much is left in, in the, in the grant budget? What's, what's the, you know, expenditures? What's, what's the, you know, expenditures of the, of the grant budget and so forth? And did the town council approve the grant budget? Somebody answer that? Did the town council approve this grant budget?
As far as I know, the town council has nothing to do with this grant budget. I can also tell you that what you see in front of you is what has been in front of you over many different school committee meetings, over many years. Nothing has really changed. I have disclosed to you, like you asked, that this is 100% grant-funded, and I've stated what grant it is. I've even told you, at your request, Mr. Mudge, how much the approximate wages turn out to be at twenty-two fifty an hour. These are all your requests.
Yep.
So, you know, you've asked this question before, and it's the same answer. This is, this is a grant that is overseen by the school department. It is Twenty First Century McKinny Vento grant, has to do with low income, and these are a regular part of that kind of program.
But this grant was never presented to the school committee for approval. And, and Dr. Oje, I know that, you know, you're, you're new on the job, but, you know, we never, we never ever discussed any of our grants, or approved any of our grants. And also, I think the town charter specifically says, specifically says, that the town council approves all grants. So, would you, could you please go back, and maybe I'm wrong, would you please, you know, check the town charter to see if there's a responsibility that's embedded in the town charter that requires the town council to accept the grant, please?
Mrs. Benson.
Could I ask Dr. Oje if he would, would follow up and find out what the council, or the town charter rules are?
I'm gonna ask our attorney to look into that for us.
Mrs. Benson.
Okay, fine, thank you.
You're welcome.
Dr. Oje has answered the question. Their attorney's gonna look into it, but I was gonna refer it to note you I left behind. I was just reading that, that's this week, when the Secretary of Education gave a speech. I'll have the Secretary of School Committee to ditto it for you, for many of us.
All right, so...
I'm not laughing, I'm telling you the truth.
I, I think that the, I think maybe the laughter comes from that no one has a, has a ditto machine anymore.
Not like you did me.
All right, we have a motion on the floor and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Aye.
Okay, that brings us up to unfinished business. Dr. Oje, do you have anything under the 2011, 2012 school budget?
No, I do not.
Okay, that brings us to the 2012, 2013 school budget. Do you have anything under that?
Timeout. 2011, 2012 school budget, is it still on that?
No, we are now in 2012, 2013.
Well, I don't think you gave the committee members an opportunity to talk about that.
There isn't anything to talk about. There is no recommendation.
Well, there certainly is. Excuse me, are you speaking for me?
No, I wouldn't dare do that, Mr. Mudge.
Okay, so then, then you'll entertain my comment.
If you wouldn't dare do that, let him speak.
Well, we're, we're looking for a recommendation from the superintendent. There isn't any recommendation, so I'm moving on to the next business item.
It doesn't say, the agenda says, 2011 and 2012 school budget. Please, please, Chandler.
Ask your question, Mr. Mudge.
Okay, thank you. I would like to know whether 2011, 12 budget has $324,000 for Davisville, a vacant Davisville Elementary School, and why is it in that account?
I can answer that question. That is where we placed the breakage when we went through the budget cycle last year. When we do, when we do our mid-year budget adjustment, that breakage number will be eliminated, and it'll be based upon where retirements have occurred, where changes and assignments are.
So, what you did is, you didn't tell the public, okay? You did not tell the public in your budget. See, your budget is not, is not, again, is not, let me get over here, is not fifty-five for eleven, okay? It is not 55 million oh eleven. It's 55 million oh eleven plus $324,000, because that's a negative revenue you have in there. And why is the school department placing these numbers in these fictitious accounts? There are TBD, and there are other account numbers by the Charter of Accounts, the state's Charter of Accounts, to account for revenues like this, not to hide them under Davisville Elementary School vacancy? That's a deplorable auditing practice, and I will bring that to the auditor's attention.
I believe this was discussed in a meeting, because we had this same discussion, so this is...
I brought it, yes, I brought it up before, and I'm asking...
So, it would have been, been before the public, and it would have been even vetted at a public forum.
No, it wasn't, because it wasn't, you couldn't get the numbers out of any of your budgets. They weren't in there.
Specifically, remember Mr. Draper bringing this issue up, so...
You have...
We can look back at the minutes, but this was discussed. Mrs. Avanzato.
I do remember them, the discussion being that there's breakage and what the amount was. I think we need to be careful how we categorize, and I'm just, I don't know, myself personally haven't seen it, but if you're putting it in a different category that doesn't say breakage, then it could be an issue. I do know we discussed the amount, but I...
It is the Savon, and also, what it really says is, our budget is not a budget authority, our expenditure authority is 55 million oh eleven. It is, and we cannot spend that $324,000.
Thank you, Mrs. Benson.
Now, could...
Mrs. Benson.
Could, could I have...
I'm recognizing Mrs. Benson.
Can we, may I ask, counsel, can we, can we, can we spend in excess...
Mr. Mudge, just wait, and I will recognize you. Mr. Mudge.
Can we expend, counsel, more than 55 billion, eleven thousand dollars?
Mr. Mudge, that, that amount was within that total.
No, it wasn't. It wasn't, ma'am. It was not in there. It was a negative number, just like we pulled years ago with the, with the Medicaid numbers. It is not in there. I'll ask for an auditor's opinion on this, please.
All right, I'd like to move down to D, one, so that we finish up in our remaining time tonight.
Could, I've asked, do we get an accounting opinion on this, please?
We've heard your request, Mr. Mudge, and it's been duly noted in the minutes.
And what is the, may I make an amendment? To get a, a formal accounting, uh, uh, opinion on the placement of negative numbers in our
Somebody will get back to you on your issue, Mr. Mudge.
Wait a minute. That's a serious allegation.
I would think so.
So, what are we gonna do about it? Who is some people gonna get back to you?
Well, I think the first chain in the command is that Mr. Draper can get back to him, and then if we have an issue from there, then we can, well, he's the business manager.
I'm sorry to give him the wrong answer.
All right.
I didn't say that for this.
You have, you have...
But this is a serious...
Point of order, point of order, please.
Point of order.
Please just wait to be recognized. And Mr. Thompson, I do not appreciate your behavior tonight and your comments directed at me, and I will respond to them.
All right, let's get back to the meeting here, folks. We have two items we need to get through to our agenda before we take a break.
Madam Chair.
For executive.
You have a $324,000 issue you're trying to gloss over.
No, Mr. Mudge, it's just nobody is prepared to discuss it tonight, and there was nothing more on the agenda.
I would like to...
So, as I said, you can submit, you can bring this back on a future agenda.
So, you're not interested in taking any action to get any...
Draper's gonna get back to you.
No, I said, you are misconstruing and bending my words. I am saying that somebody will get back to you, but we don't have an answer for you here tonight. So, we're now moving to D, one memorandum. Mr. Welch.
What happened to the 2012, 13 school budget?
We have fifteen, ten minutes before the end of the meeting.
I just wanna ask a question, that's all, not discussion.
All right.
I had asked for the meeting that we're gonna have with the town council, that we have, that we have a list of possible budget cuts. I wanna know that we will have that for that, for that meeting. Yes, thank you. That's all I wanted to know.
A comment, please? I, I fully support Mr. Welch's concerns, which leads me to, to, to go on to the meeting with the town council. What are we gonna present to the town council? What numbers? And if we're presenting numbers, are we, are we gonna present a budget to the town council? If we, you know, show cuts?
No, there would not be, there would not be a budget to the council, Mr. Dr. Oje.
The presentation that I plan to make is simply going to outline the kinds of programs that we would be talking about with the budget crisis that we're facing. I don't know the exact numbers of, of our budget. I don't know the exact numbers of even the budget projection, but as you know, we've had some discussions about where things could generally fall, given what the legislature would do or would not do. So, I can only make some broad statements about, you know, if we're forced to cut millions of dollars, here's the kinds of things that we would possibly be going to. I'm not looking to, to scare anyone, except to make people realize that this could be a very difficult year, but I certainly do not have a budget that I'm presenting on, on next Monday night.
But it will be in relation to the 2012 budget, which basically, you know, is, is, explains where we're going to be in, in 2013. So essentially, to my way of thinking, by doing that, you really kinda have a budget in the way. Thank you.
Okay, we're moving on to D, one. Do I have a motion to approve D, one? So moved?
Second.
Is there further discussion on D, one? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? All right, I'd like to also approve JLCE in the remaining time we have. This is the same policy that we have every year, it's merely been updated for the date. It's our standing orders for how to handle first aid emergencies, and it has been approved by our doctor and our head school nurse. So, do I have a motion on the table?
So moved?
Second.
Oh, yes.
Take your time.
I can't hear you speak on.
Just turn the mic on.
Oh, it's on. Okay.
Sorry.
Your name is?
My name's Gregory Glasberg, Stephanie Whitman Drive, my apologies. Some of you know this, some of you may not, but I happen to be the parent of a child with type one diabetes in one of our elementary schools, and I read through this policy with that particular concern in mind, because it's obviously near and dear to my heart. It's a very comprehensive, particularly the sections I was looking at with respect to care of diabetic children. But one thing that I noted that is in omission, and I think it is simply because this is being, excuse me, approved from a prior policy. About two years ago, the state of Rhode Island passed a law regarding the administration of emergency glucagon, which is a emergency medication for children who have extraordinarily low blood sugars, basically resulting in unconsciousness or seizures. It's a true medical emergency, and I was one of a group of parents, concerned medical professionals, who testified before the House and Senate committees to get this bill passed. And what it allows is certain staff members of the public schools who've been trained in the administration of the medication, to, in an emergency situation, give this to a child who's in dire need of it. The reality is that sometimes the amount of time that it takes for a rescue to get there is too long, and it also covers the fact that our school nurse teachers, while they attempt to be available all the time, they aren't always available all the time. I know it's been implemented in our schools, it's just not reflected in the policy. The policy does talk about the emergency administration of epinephrine, which is very similar, but it doesn't talk about the glucagon, so I just wanted to note that. I don't think it's necessarily worth putting off approving it as is, but just before this is, you know, just sort of recycled next year, if you could take a second to look at that, and I have a copy of the statute if you wanna take a look so you can incorporate it.
Yes, could you please hand the statute in?
Sure.
And our school, our school doctor is my neighbor, so I'll make sure that I'll bring that up to, of Dr. Klein, so that I can ask her if there, if there is something, because we can always bring this back up and re-approve it this year, even if we approve it tonight.
Just needs to get rolled in.
Thank you.
Could I make an amendment to, to, a recommendation to approve this policy, subject of incorporation of, with the doctor's, you know, blah, 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 approval and confirmation of that? So, we just get it in the process?
Well, we could, we should still bring it up just to make sure that we have the correct wording.
Yeah.
If we can approve it tonight, we can always re-approve it, once our doctor adds the appropriate language.
Oh, it's, 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 the process is just doing it twice, I guess. I'm willing to approve it, the incorporation of the comments.
No.
Is there a motion?
Is there a motion on the table? Mr. Mudge, was that a motion?
I think the motion that we approve the procedures with the comments as recommended, and with the approval of the doctor.
Second.
Okay. Any further comments?
How many motions do we have?
We just, I think we just said Mr. Mudge's motion.
I motioned prior to that, but that's okay.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You heard me.
I'm sorry, I did not.
That's all right.
So, we have a motion on the floor already. Mrs. Benson.
The question that I want to ask some, two years ago, and I read this in the thing, we were supposed to have the training on the buses, and someone was supposed to know how to use the epinephrine, all of that, that was in there. And I was gonna ask to get a status of the training, even before you consult your doctor on the part that's not new, get a report from transportation and see if they have instituted these things, 'cause diabetes among children is as common now as measles, more common. And we don't want a child riding a bus that nobody knows what to do with him, or that it's something being done that's not there. So, before we see a, a doctor, I think we should get a status on the program that's, that's here, that we're supposed to have. And when we incorporate it with this information, and you're seeing the doctor, that will give us a evaluation of how well things are doing.
We have done the training for our paraprofessionals who are on the buses.
Well, we'd like to see if you have an update on it, and get a list, and when the last classes were taught. Nothing wrong with that. Wouldn't you like to know? Wouldn't you like to know?
We have a motion.
Now, what is the motion?
We have a motion to approve JLCE.
Would I amend the motion, please? I'd like to amend the motion, I, which I said before. I'd like to amend the motion to incorporate the current requirements that's being presented to us tonight in accordance with Rhode Island general law. That is Rhode Island general law?
I don't think we can amend the motion.
Why, why can't we amend the motion?
I have a concern, this is a policy, you really should be adopting the policy as written. I would prefer, if you wanna do that, then table it and bring it back in two weeks.
That's fine.
Yeah, because we don't have policy on here.
If you want to approve a policy...
I'll make a motion on the table.
We want the policy to be in effect, because we want it, it's our standing orders as to what to do, and they are, they're only good for one year. We haven't approved them yet. So, we need to approve this, and then it's the sort of thing, if we can come back and amend it.
Absolutely.
So, and I would not want to write policy here at the table. We have done that five years ago and decided that was the wrong thing to do, and it took way too much time. So, we have a motion on the floor, and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
No.
No.
Okay, ayes have it, and we will bring this policy back if, if our doctor recommends that we make changes. So, that brings us to nine twenty-nine.
I can make a motion that we solicit the, the information from a doctor. I'm sure she's not dispensing it freely, as a neighbor that the school...
She has a contract with us. She is our school doctor.
Oh, I never remember voting on the school doctor since Dr. Ben Wayne.
Madam Chair? Yes. I'd like to ask for some latitude to make a comment on the budget.
No, she said we're going to discuss in the budget.
It was on the agenda.
She said.
You can make your comment in a minute.
I can make it in a minute. Two things. One, I said that we should be saying at this microphone every single meeting how far behind we are with this budget and letting the public know what's going on, and while we're talking for hours over items that are thousands of dollars, we have millions of dollars that we are in deficit, and that we look to maybe be four million dollars potentially, very
very likely, actually. So the public needs to be aware and needs to know that we're gonna have to do some severe cutting, and they should turn out to let us know what their desires are and what they want to do with the school system. Number one. Number two, I'm gonna respond to some comments that were made earlier at this table, because they were directed at me, and they were personal comments, and I think any member should have latitude to respond to those kinds of comments. In terms of the Jamestown contract, the information that we had was at the table that night. Yes, people saw the numbers--
Okay, I am gonna rule this out of order, because, and I know that you will not be happy, but I don't want personal comments to be here at the table.
And you should have ruled their comments out of order, Madam Chair, and you should allow me the latitude to respond. There was no sneakiness that went on with that contract. I have no personal gain in pushing through the Jamestown contract. I am a taxpayer in this town, like everyone else at the table. And Mr. Thompson--
Okay. I'm gonna ask that we cut short your comments.
I'm gonna ask that they don't make those kind of comments anymore at the table.
I'm gonna ask for a motion to go in--
Let Mrs. Avinzado finish her comments, please.
No, I'm not gonna let this committee disintegrate into--
Disintegrate?
--name-calling back and forth.
No, we, please, this is what--
I am looking for a motion to recess into executive--
This is what democracy is about.
No, democracy is not sitting up here and calling each other names.
Exchange information.
Now, I'm gonna be asking that, exchanging information is not what we're doing. So this is time to recess to executive--
If we have a disagreement on information--
Fine, you can take that elsewhere, but I'm not doing--
Motion to adjourn.
No, that's the issue.
I'm looking for a motion to recess into executive--
Motion to recess into executive session.
Second.
Thank you very much. All those in favor, say aye.
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 No.
Thank you very much. Recess into executive session.
Are we gonna handle all these other things that we're gonna get to? Are they gonna be automatically on the agenda?